Here to represent the Responsible Wind Energy Group.
Go ahead, Lane.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of the Responsible Wind Energy Group, but I'm also here on behalf of patrons of Republic County. I've told you this before, no way, shape, or form do I want to be here doing this at all. I have asked you guys in the past, I came here last week and I asked for bullet points. I wanted to know you guys early on, so that we would know what, uh, what your negotiation points would be and things like that. I asked for those bullet points last week and I did not get any. I think it's only fair that the patrons of this county know what's being negotiated. I also don't think it's right that an attorney that's being paid for in a roundabout way by Nextera is making the decisions for us as the county. I have a question for you three, did you three sign a code of ethics when you took this office? Did you see it?
Yeah, I did and signed it.
Okay. That's good, because what's going on here is unethical. There is no way that someone being paid by Nextera is ethical for them to do for our patrons. You guys do not realize the power that you have. You guys can negotiate to no end. You have that opportunity. You cannot be pushed around by anyone. But it seems that you guys really, really want this, and I am not the person to stand in the way. If people want this, they can have it. But when it boils down to the patrons of Republic County, gonna be holding the bag at the end of everything, it's very disturbing.
Do you want to elaborate on that real quick?
There's nothing in there, there's nothing in there as far as dollar wise, what's gonna happen with these and their decommission. There's nothing in there that protects the county, everything is in favor of, of Nextera. Do you guys understand why, what is going on here? You know why they need your blessing? I have asked you guys many, many times in here, I have asked you, what happens when I suffer loss? Who do I get to sue? And it goes dead silent. Nobody answers the question? Guess where that liability goes to? That liability goes to the county, because you guys signed up on it. Take it to a court a lot when something happens there. Do you think Nextera's gonna tell you that? Who's gonna suffer that? Things are gonna come walking in the door, lawsuits are gonna come walking in the door, and a county is gonna be in it also. They need your blessing for the roads, they need your blessing for several different things, but at the end of the day, this is for the next fifty to ninety years, that's gonna be my next point. I asked for months to two months for the people to digest this. And you're giving us what, a little over two weeks? There are four thousand six hundred seventy-four patrons in this county, I told you last week. Sixty-five or so often are gonna get wind towers and they're gonna be very happy people, the rest of them. There probably gonna be some happy people that, you know, have some other things that come about, they're gonna make some money off this too. Totally understand. But... The other patrons, it's very possible, more than likely, are gonna be left in the bag. How do we know what's gonna happen twenty, thirty, fifty years, even ninety years from now?
Have you reviewed the decommissioning agreement that's been negotiated?
I have looked, I've looked over it quickly.
I don't disagree with you on the idea that that is something that we need to protect ourselves from, or against or with, was a topic. Okay? And I believe we've done a good job with it, and you brought this point up months ago. If you would like to take time to actually read it, make notes on it, I'd be happy to entertain any thoughts in the first of the commissioning agreement. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but we, there's people looking at this, not just I. People have deal with this every day. So, lastly, um, I have went, asked you several times, I wanted a public vote, asked for a public vote so the patrons can do it themselves. I have asked for a moratorium. And lastly, I'm going to ask you if any of you would like to recuse yourself of this vote.
I don't feel that I will recuse.
Go ahead.
I have no, uh, ties to anything associated with the wind farm in one form, shape, or another. Um, I will not refuse myself from the vote, I've been selected for this position to make decisions. Unfortunately, I don't like being in this position right now, but I'm going to do what, uh, what I was asked or chosen to do. Um, and to elaborate on that a little bit, I have asked three different forms of counsel to review each commissioner's, um, terms in regards to, um, that particular topic. Uh, one, one, uh, office chose not to give a legal opinion, the other two will be providing legal opinions, um, for all three commissioners, is my, that was my request anyways, so.
Will they be providing that prior to the vote?
I'm sorry?
Will they be providing that prior to the vote?
They will be required, yes.
Same, same response. The attorney's looking at us, you're, you're asking me personally, and now I'm ans, I'm answering you personally. They're looking at what happened with me personally, and that opinion has not come down yet. But it will.
Are they giving a legal opinion or an ethical opinion?
They're giving a legal opinion, they're applying the facts that are known in regards to this. The test that the state of Kansas has them apply those facts to, and then they'll provide a legal opinion. Uh, keep in mind, legal opinions are that until they're tested by the Board of Law, their opinion, that's why I asked them more than mine.
Well, generally, I have laid it out there, um, I will turn this over to Kelly, I have what I aim for, what I need. I know you don't wanna be in this position. Ashley, I said, I know you don't wanna be in this position, I said, Ashley, no, please.
I think that's probably relevant to the answer.
So, good luck, that's all I have.
Your voices are so hot, soft, that we cannot hear out here, could you please speak up?
We'll try, yes, thank you.
Kelly, can I make your comment?
Um, I'm, we're still on an agenda time with the...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, that's fine.
So, we'll try to stay in that, and yes, we'll do your comments.
No, that's fine, sure.
I just wanna follow up to what Lane said on the ethics and reiterate what principle five and principle six of the Kansas County Commissioners Associated Code of Ethical Conduct for County Commissioners states. Principle five, a county commissioner should perform the duties of public office with fairness and impartiality so as to enhance public confidence in county government. Bullet point, impartiality requires a commissioner to engage in conduct unsuayed by public clamor without fear of criticism and without seeking personal financial gain or partisan advantage. A commissioner should make decisions free from the influence of family members, private business relationships, or other personal relationships. A commissioner should promote county business practices that contribute to public perception of the impartiality of county decisions. A commissioner should abstain from voting, even if not required to by law, if his or her impartiality might be reasonably questioned. A commissioner should abstain from voting, even if not required to by law, if his or her impartiality might be reasonably questioned. And one point from principle six, a county commissioner should neither seek nor accept any favor from any source that may be offered to influence his or her official making decisions. Bullet point under that principle, avoiding the appearance of impropriety sustains public trust in democracy and is a necessary standard for commissioners to consider in determining an ethical course of action. If I'm not mistaken, turbine number sixty-three is currently under, um, Edwin Spiegel's name in the plat book.
It's not under my name.
In the plat book, in the plat book, it is, um...
Ed and Catherine Spiegel Trust.
Right, but in the plat book it is, so it gives the appearance to the citizens of this county.
If it started there, you should recuse yourself. If you started this, you should recuse yourself. If you're referring to the plat book, the plat book showed that my mother-in-law was living at our house and she has died three years ago. So, if you're relying to the plat book, it's not very accurate.
That's what the citizens of the county have to go off of unless they go and dig into, um, right, the courthouse records. So, it's given the appearance that there may be other, um, feelings going on, and we feel that that should have been vetted very early in this process. Um, a couple other, I have several things, but I know several other people want to, um, talk, but I do wanna highlight a couple things.
Can I just, to expand on that? Five towers under the Spiegel name. The family Spiegel, there are five towers listed.
Zoning, on May third, twenty twenty-two, you received a letter from the Republic County Responsible Wind Energy Group requesting a moratorium, a public forum, and zoning by way of a wind energy ordinance to be put in place. You state you did not want to do any of these items. In the develop, agreement, development agreement, there is the word zoning. Why did you do this when you stated you were against zoning?
What do you do, uh?
Why did you put zoning in the development agreement when, um, previously in previous months you stated you were against zoning?
The word zoning in there doesn't mean it's zoning.
What does it mean then?
Tell them, what would it mean?
Read the entire paragraph that says anything about zoning.
I, I did, I have read this whole development agreement.
I mean, to the point, I wanna hear what says that we want zoning.
It says zoning, it's right here, it says the title, zoning.
Would you read it?
Yes, I read it.
She just did.
It says zoning.
Read the paragraph then.
I don't see why, unless otherwise provided herein or in any other definitive agreements where, whenever the consents or approvals of the county or any of its employees, consultants, attorneys, officers, agents, or representatives are required to be secured or obtained by developer, under the provisions of this agreement, the same shall not be unreasonably conditioned, withheld, or delayed unless otherwise set forth in definitive agreements. Unless otherwise provided herein or in any other definitive agreements, the county will reasonably cooperate with developer in the development, construction, operation, maintenance, decommissioning. The wind project issue all permits approvals, authorizations required by local regulations or other law, if any, provided developer filed complaint, complaint applications based over applicable fees and complies with all the requirements specified in this agreement and is not otherwise in default under the terms of the definitive agreements and is compliant with all applicable law.
Is anywhere in that you just read say that we are suggesting zoning?
It says zoning.
But if, just because it says that, okay, guys, I, I haven't been a part of most of this because I wasn't hired to do it, but I, I, but I think...
Doug? You have launched us for months and months for exactly this.
Okay, nevermind, that's a little clear.
And told us that if this happened, we would be asked to leave.
Yes.
Yes.
Get him out of here.
Every week, every single week.
Oh, I'm not leaving, you don't have to pay me, sir.
Hold on, hold on.
Excuse me?
You're absolutely right, hold on. I've done that, hold on.
What is this? We can chat about that too.
Just, we'll, we'll make the statement right now. You're correct, I've done that every single week, I've done it when public forums starts, okay? This is Republic County's attorney, Justin Farrell. He usually isn't here, he chose to weigh in on that, that is fine. So, I'll make a statement right now, it'll begin now, instead of going through the end of this meeting, it'll be stated again at the next meeting and so on and so forth. You're here to address the commissioners, you're not here to address each other. Your comments will be focused to us as a board, not between each other. If it occurs between each other, you will be asked to leave, it's not May anymore. You will be asked to leave and you will not be welcome back. That way, everybody can say their piece, everybody's entitled to their opinion and provide us their information. Is that clear as much? Are there any questions? Let's move forward, thank you.
So, moving forward with the zoning, why are you letting Nextera dictate how to zone our county instead of the citizens who live here? Is that right to zone our county through an agreement with an outside company? Do you think hiding behind closed doors while you let Nextera tell you how to protect the citizens is an ethical way to have done this? It is ludicrous to think that Nextera is going to do anything to protect the citizens, they have a strong track record of not. Two other items I want to, and I know there's many other people that wanna speak, ADLS, that is lighting system, um, the technology that is out there so we don't see red blinking lights and so our county doesn't look like we are in, um, really, for lack of better terms, a science fiction movie, 'cause that's what it looks like when you look at these red blinking lights all the time. According to the FAA website, they spell out how a company such as Nextera goes about applying to use the said systems on their project. Uh, I will give this to you, I have copied from the FAA website in the frequently asked questions area, how to request ADLS and what must be done when submitting ADLS, so it's there, Nextera should do that. Um, we demand that any commissioner, before they sign these agreements, that these steps listed above be completed and proved to be done. There is absolutely no reason why that cannot be asked for. We demand that Nextera submitted the initial application form with the ADLS box is checked. We demand that Nextera provide who they are using as their primary vendor for this project. We demand points of contact with said vendor to verify they are in fact contracted to develop and install an ADLS system on this facility. Again, at a very minimum, you do not sign any agreement until the FAA has determined if ADLS can be used on this facility. And in the agreements, it should say if ADLS is not installed, operations, that operations must cease. One other thing I want to say is on setbacks. In the development agreement, the towns receive one mile. People outside of towns receive fifteen hundred feet from their dwelling. One point two times turbine height from their property line. You are showing implicit bias towards town people. Why are town people getting one mile and people who live in the country are getting less?
Can I interject one thing, Kelly? You mentioned four towns, Cuba, Mundon, Narcon, and Agenda. Belleville's not even on that list for the one mile setback. Why is that?
I believe to answer that question, there is also an identified boundary in what shows agreements apply. And I believe that Belleville is further from that in this agreement, so it's not applicable to be included in.
So, who made the boundary?
The boundary outlines the property areas.
Who made the boundary, I'm asking.
Nextera suggested it because it falls, well, why is that surprising? Because they offer the project and there's a boundary line in regards to it, you see what I mean?
No.
Okay, so...
But they still made the boundary, that's, that's, I'm just laying that out here.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, nonetheless, neither is Norway, Cuba, or, excuse me, Norway or Republic or Cortland or Scandinavia within it because they're not in that area, it's not applicable to them as far as the distance.
Right, so let's go back to what you said, so since them are, those are in the footprint, why, why are those the ones that, so the country people gotta have them close to them and the townspeople don't, but why is that? I mean, I, I know a situation over here, uh, where it's gonna be pretty close to a house and there's plenty of farm ground to the south, and, uh, it could be put out there in the middle of the field, but I imagine the farmer wouldn't want it in the middle of the field, he wants it on the property line. It's gonna irritate the people that live right there on the property. Matter of fact, I already have a good idea, they're gonna pick up and move. Well, that's neat. So... Here's another thing that really bothers me. There's an individual that's in this room right now that went around to some of these people, offering them fifteen hundred dollars to sign a contract, and at the bottom of that contract, there's a gag order, not to talk about. The other individual sitting in here that was on the recipient end of that, is this a type of, of, uh, company you wanna deal with? Really? Gag orders?
Well, that's section five point two of the contract to the signers, is a gag order. You can't talk about all the problems associated, because they know all the problems associated. Why is that not looked at, why is that not addressed? And it also states they can sign away our non-signer rights as well, we have no input to that.
Fucking rude, you're dealing with a company, you're signing gag orders. Does that not go, does, does that not ugly within your communities and within your county?
So, to piggyback off of that, um, what they said about the property line and one point two times the turbine height, that's seven hundred and twenty feet, if you're talking about a six hundred foot turbine. The engineers who work on these things have to wear PPE within fifteen hundred feet of the turbine. So, if that's on my property line, that means that there is nine hundred feet that I'm not protected on my own property. How is that okay? I can't build a building there, I can't put what I want on my property there, because that is in the danger zone, and I mean, that's per the Nextera and the Nextera engineers. That's trespass zoning, that's my property, that I should be able to do whatever I want with it.
And in case of a fire, they're supposed to say, stay one thousand six hundred and twenty feet away. And in case of lightning during a thunderstorm, no one is supposed to be in the area for an hour from three thousand two hundred and forty feet away from the tower. Why is it safe to put a house closer than that?
And where did you get your statistics, ma'am?
I can quote them to you.
Is that what you had last week?
Part of it. Part of it was the week before, part of it was week before that. So, why are town people getting one mile and people who live in the country getting anything less?
That is what was proposed in the initial contract, that is where they chose to cide the turbines.
So, we just go along with it?
So, because they said so, then that's what we have to do.
I, I came to meetings week after week after week after week and asked you about setbacks. And, and more than one time I heard in here, it won't be the one mile that we want, but it won't be fifteen hundred feet. And what, what if we get, what if we get fifteen hundred feet?
And she's not the only one, you said that to me on the phone, you said it to people at the fair, you've said it to other people in this room and not in this room.
The con, this agreement also states that, um, if they're not compliant with this agreement, that they'll mitigate that. What does that even mean? They come out to me and say, oh, I'm so sorry that that's happening to you, that's mitigation, trying to make you feel better, that doesn't make it better. There's no teeth in this, a real contract says there's arbitration, not mitigation. I can use arbitration, not mitigation, to correct the problem if they are not compliant. So, if I have seven hours of shadow flicker in my house a day, they can come out and they can say, well, here, we went to Walmart and bought you some room darkening shades so you could put them on your windows, you don't have to have shadow flicker. I have to live here too. I am entitled to enjoy my property, I shouldn't have to go through mitigation. There's nothing even in this agreement that says what the process is for mitigation. What is that process? When do we get that information? Who do I call? Which one of you do I call in the middle of the night when there's a problem? Which one of you do I call during this construction process when there's a problem? And we're not compliant, when they're trespassing, when they've cut down fences and my cows are out, who do I call? That's not in here either.
If it's a matter of trespassing, you would call the sheriff because that is a criminal act. If it's a matter of something to do with a civil remedy, then we'll have to go through whatever steps are best suited for it, if it might...
But that is not stated in here, what are those steps? There are no teeth in here to make them comply.
The landowners and Nextera already have their own contracts protecting both of them. This contract is supposed to protect the rest of us.
Right.
And it does not.
And it also says...
It continues to protect Nextera.
Non-signers, it doesn't even represent the rest of the people that have two or five acre lots in the rural area. It doesn't talk about the renters renting some of these farm people, only the non-signers. Why is it addressed to us that live in the footprint as non-signers and the rest of them aren't even protected or referenced into there? You see that in that contract?
How would the rest, run that by me again, I'm not following.
It type, there's a section, it's, it's labeled as, and I don't know who has that contract, as non-signers. It's not talking about the residents of the fo, of the footprint, it's talking about the non-signers within the footprint. There's more than non-signers, there's people that own two, five acre lots that live out in the rural area that have a very invested into their houses, they're not even referenced in the contract, there's no protection.
How are they other than a, if, if, if they haven't signed an agreement with Nextera, then they are not the signers, so they would follow in the direction?
But they can't sign 'cause they don't have the acres. There's no way they can sign, 'cause they don't have the acres to put a windmill on, just like the people that rent some of these. They don't own property to even be able to sign, but what's the protection? They're citizens of this county, why aren't they referenced in this county?
I guess I would have to review that, I'm still not following what you're saying, if, if you're, if you're saying...
The goal is to protect all citizens and represent all citizens of this county, not just the non-signers in the footprint. You sign this, the west side is given, they're gonna have to go with this, so why are they not referenced onto this stuff? But within the footprint, if you remember early on when we put the maps out over here, what was that original map that you had complained about because it had a picture of Rocky Pond on it that we put up here in the courthouse? What was on that map? A hundred and seventy-six homes across two hundred and eight towers in Republic County. That is more than a one-to-one reference of a tower to a home. Where are those hundred and seventy-six people, and yes, some of those are signers, I'll definitely say that, and some of them have towers on their property, and I'll give them credit for walking the talk. But there are how many that are nowhere close to those towers that represent that property, okay? The biggest thing is a put-down of us people that did not sign onto this stuff. Even the superintendent of this school comes along, you're a friend of the school if you signed a tower. So, does that mean that we as non-signers are not a friend of the school because we didn't sign? Holy moly here, and I'm going off of the deep end here, Doug. The reference says non-signers and there's more than that that live in the footprint, okay?
I, I understand what you're getting at, I'm not sure that I'm following with you, as far as what other people have said, um...
I know, I know, that was published in the telescope.
We, we've passed our agenda time, it's nine oh five, we'll move into the public forums and, um, if anyone's here that wasn't here before, keep in mind that you address the commissioners, no conversation between yourselves or you will be asked to leave and you will not return. The seat of civil, everybody's thoughts, comments, and opinions are valid, they need to be recognized, the commissioners need to understand them. So, with that being said, in the past, the way we've done it the whole time is we've been able to just allow individuals who weren't here to speak. We've always discussed that we can go back to the sign-in sheet and a timeframe if needed. However, I still think it's best if we just allow individuals to speak as they choose, as long as that works for everyone. I will be asking people to keep it extremely short because our agenda is full this morning and we will head into nine thirty.
I, I would still like an answer to my question regarding how did we get to fifteen hundred setbacks when we were told that it would not be fifteen hundred feet?
I, I am the one that told you it would not be fifteen hundred feet.
Yes, you did.
And I had every intent of it not being fifteen hundred feet, um...
So, why is that?
I, I would like, yeah, how, how did we arrive at that?
There's a couple different things that we've looked at, um, one is... Um, one is how do you determine what is and isn't a safe distance? And no, I'm not asking for opinions. I've heard those since April. What I'm, what I'm referring to is that, um, there is one entity that I have found that stands up and takes responsibility for that turbine. And that is the manufacturer. And the manufacturer has a recommended setback distance. Now, I'm not saying other people can't be liable and other things can't occur. However, that manufacturer has a recommended setback distance based on the height of the turbine. Should anything occur within the scope of their recommended setback distance, it's my opinion that they are more than liable for that. So if they have implemented that setback distance, they are confident that it protects against the various different aspects of concerns that we have. Now, that is one thing. No, you can't, not till I'm done. That is one thing that was taken into that consideration. The other is, is the simple point of this. It is extremely important to keep everybody's concerns, thoughts and rights in mind. With that being said, you have a very valid point of not wanting them close to your home. And I completely understand that. At the same time, you have landowners who own property that have a very valid point that there's no reason for them not to get a wind turbine that they've entered a lease agreement about because of a setback that may or may not be required. Um, now, am I saying this right or wrong? I don't know. That's just both sides of it. And that is how it has to be approached. Um, that is where the commission is at today on the setback distance.
So my, my next point on that is in this development agreement, um.
Can I, can I comment on that now, Doug?
Yes, sir, you can, I'm sorry.
You're referencing GE has the wind with a turbine generator. That does not reference the blades. That does not, that represents the height of the tower. Anything else that is just the generator that they are referencing. That they feel comfortable is fine, but it's not gonna blow it, it's not gonna do whatever. They're not referencing the blades.
I believe that they are. Um, and we're out of here and I believe that is correct. Because they measure from the tip height of the blade at a twelve o'clock position. And they discuss various different topics such as ice row and different things like that. So I believe you're mistaken, or at least it differs with what I've written.
They don't even manufacture the blades, Doug. They're maybe China.
Well, that might be, but GM doesn't manufacture all the parts of their car. They still provide the warranty recommendations for them.
In regard to the fifteen hundred feet and the mile, I am going to be within three thousand feet of one of those. I do not understand why my property, my home, which I have lived in for fifty years, has less priority than a property owner who happens to be, I have two of them. I have a brother who lives in Barnes and I have another brother who lives in Great Ban. The one in Barnes is going to have a tower. Is that tower going to affect him on a day-to-day busi, situation? Are you telling me that the rights of absentee property owners are more important than the rights of citizens of Republic County who have lived here since birth and will probably die here? Are you, is that what you're saying? That's what it says to me. Fifteen hundred feet is okay if you live in the country. But if you live in Cuba or Mundon or the other little communities, it's not. I also know that one of the largest people, the largest landowner who is going to profit from this does not live in Republic County. I don't, I, I just don't understand the, the strategy. I, I feel like, gentlemen, you are not looking out for the property rights. And I do not. If nothing else, please consider bringing it to a public vote. If it loo, if I lose, so be it. At least I'm going to feel okay about it. Okay? At least I'm go, at least I can say, well, we tried and it didn't work and everybody wants it. But you know what? My brother who lives in Washington County and the one who lives in Barton County cannot vote. Neither can the one who lives in Washington County who owns considerable property, vote. Unless he changes his address within, you know. I just, you know, I do not understand that. And in terms of Marvin's, excuse me. In cur, in terms of Mr. Jurdo saying that you could not, he didn't know how, you could create a item on the ballot that would address both sides. I find that difficult to believe because you hire an attorney and they draw that up for you. And in terms of Mr. Spiegel saying he's afraid of zoning, you are zoning our county because you are making it into a wind development. So you are zoning our county.
I couldn't say that any better.
Yeah.
And on that thread, that's part of the whole thing. They could have moved twenty to thirty turbines and we wouldn't be here. But they won't because they're bullies and they push their way in and they do what they want. They should have come to you first. They should have showed you the map. They should have been willing to move some away from people that didn't want them. And then they should have filed their FAA applications and moved forward with the development. Not come in and slap down the map and said, this is what we're doing. We already paid to file the FAA stuff and we have all these leases signed, so too bad, so sad. And you guys have to negotiate this contract with us now.
And on that note, what signing property owner has come to us, non-signer property owners and say, we're about ready to screw your life?
I had, I had one.
One single one has come to my house.
Let's hold on a minute. I can't help what people do or don't do in the private business. Uh, referring to your comments, you have a good point. Um, there are several ways to approach things. It's always easier to look back in time and, and that goes for anything.
But you still have the chance with this agreement to make them bend to us, not the other way around.
Okay, now let me see. It was also made extremely clear that it was either, um, Marshall County or Nehmah County where the commissioners chose to cite turbines specifically, each turbine individually. And it was requested that that not occur because it didn't work as what they thought. Um, and I don't remember if that was from citizens over there that called early on and the message was conveyed through some people that came here. I don't know. But your, your point is well-taken. But that was always in the back of my mind that they were not happy with it. And that individual citing by commissioners or whatever, um, did not work, at, at least for some people in that area. At least according to their opinion. So who's next? We are gonna run out of time, of course, because, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I would like to, to address the commission. Uh, you and I had a conversation, uh, a number of weeks ago. And I'd asked about the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes. And we had a conversation that, uh, with Mr. Anderson. And he stated firmly that, uh, utilities do not pay taxes. But yet they take out half, quarter page ads in the telescope. Tax revenue from wind can enhance all of these things. They're, they're not gonna be paying taxes unless you gentlemen will read the totality of KSA Sunday nine two oh one. It's referenced in the contract. And it does in fact give them a ten-year tax abatement. But also in that same paragraph, it empowers you as elected local officials to, how do you say it? To, uh, request a fee to offset the losses from the lost property tax. And you and I had a conversation and you said that you would not even consider it. You know exactly how much NPIRIT should owe. And it's somewhere in the vicinity of fourteen to sixteen million dollars per year.
I don't believe that's correct.
I, I think it is. I do your math. I, I think it comes out that, that way. And, and you and I talked about that because my figure was very low. And I said, oh, Harold, you don't have any idea of what, how much this is. But according to the state statute, the legislature gives you the authority to negotiate if you want to negotiate, or you have the total power to set a fee to offset whatever you will lose. I don't understand, how are you going to look a taxpayer in the eye? When you raise the mill levy, you say, we have to have more money to operate. And you're leaving that much money on the table. Because they say, and then there was a, in one of their ads, they go on about how the wonderful things they'll do for the fire departments, uh, uh, ambulances, whatever, schools. They're gonna be spending money, well, no, it's in the contract. Oh, that's where I read it. That, that, to the best of their ability, they will spread all this money around Republic County. That money should go to the general fund and be dispensed through you guys, not what they decide to do. And I, and I'm mystified at, at how you can leave that much money on the table. And then you'll turn around and, and raise the mill levy, raise the valuation on our properties. And so that you can collect more money when, when you are turning down an opportunity to collect that money. And you have the authorization to do it. But yet all I've heard this morning, sitting here listening, is that you commissioners are more worried about protecting Next Era than you are the Republic County citizens. Wait, I'm not quite done. Please don't interrupt.
We're talking about that because I'm gonna comment here in a minute.
That's fine, and I will sit down. But, but you guys sat here and you say, well, we can't change the contract. This is what Next Era wants. This is what they have proposed. And that is a bunch of BS. You are here to represent Republic County. They have lawyers. They have a multitude of lawyers to protect themselves. You need to protect us.
Amen.
Amen.
Do you wanna hear the comments, your statements? If you do, have a seat.
What?
I said, do you wanna hear the comments, your statements?
I, I wasn't your response.
Okay, so back to the, the pilot payment that you're referring to. You're correct. Um, the county does have the ability to influence that to a certain extent. Next Era has a history of, uh, common practice from one county to the other. The thing that you guys brought up in regards to the ten-year tax abatement, it used to be a lifetime tax abatement, then became a ten-year tax abatement. You were concerned and you brought up very good points that things such as the sale of the property, repowering of the property, different aspects of it, could potentially allow them to avoid paying the property taxes after the tenth year. Have you read the contract in regards to that? Because that was part of the negotiation. It is absolutely not possible to re-power, to sell, to do anything like that, to avoid paying those property taxes. When you look at the value of that property tax that will come into this county at that time if this project goes through, it is significantly worth negotiating to take the average pilot payment to ensure that that tax revenue comes at that time. I feel that's more important. That's why that decision was made. Onto your next point of we're not protecting the county. I didn't make a list, but we had concerns for decommissioning. Very valid concerns because they'll protect, that, they will deal with our children and children's children in the future. Read that, okay? The money is upfront on day one before construction starts. Instead of relying on a salvage value and the funds being available on year ten. In addition to that, the county will review it every five years. Not only will there be a review to adjust the value of funds that are there, the county will be able to approve those guaranteeing the funds. In other words, we get to investigate the bank or whatever. Do whatever due diligence the commissioners at the time feel that the money is actually there. So that the county and its citizens are not responsible for the decommissioning cost. There were concerns for water. If you look at that, the water used for this project if it moves forward has to be permitted water. We don't control water here, but the state does. It has to come through one of those mechanisms. Um, I knew I should have made a list. And yes, Joanne, it's in there.
No, I know it's in here. I highlighted it.
Okay.
Uh, because when you talk about the water usage, it says, if the developer becomes aware that said water usage is or is likely to temporarily impair a non-participating landowner's historical water use as of the effective date, developer will use commercially reasonable measures to properly resolve or mitigate the impairment. What does that mean?
Do you see where it has to be permitted water?
What does that mean? If they, if they dry up my well, they contaminate my water, they're gonna mitigate that. Are they responsible to run rural water to my home? Or is that you? Because that's not my responsibility, but that's not stated in here. I am back to the mitigation process and how do we fix that and what is that?
Right, if they have eco-water systems, dump off ten jugs of water at her house, is that enough mitigation? What's enough? Like, what is the?
That's what I wanna know.
Well, Doug, can we, can we address a couple of the issues that I brought up? Do you know that, that, that the towers are on, you know, you're, you're counting on that eleventh year the tax revenues come rolling in? They have rapid depreciation. What are those towers gonna be worth at the end of ten years? They're not gonna be worth what they are when they're built. So you're looking at a way, way reduced amount.
That's the amount I'm looking at.
Has Next Era ever paid property taxes in America?
To represent us? Why, why are you looking down the road and saying, it's okay to put this off for ten years? You know for a fact, if, if you have studied this, that you have the authority to do an in lieu of tax payment. And you're saying, no, we'll just put that off for ten years. Next Era is saying, look, over a thirty-year period, we're gonna give the county a hundred million dollars. You realize, if you have done your math, in the first ten years, they should owe us a hundred and forty million. In the first ten years. Why are we putting everything down the road? And why are we making this contract to favor them, to protect them? Uh.
We're running out of time.
Okay, fine. I'm, I'm done anyhow.
Take, take that argument to your state legislatures.
I have. I've got to, and they're very interested in it.
I don't disagree with you a bit.
Then why aren't you acting?
However, they have implemented a ten-year tax exemption period.
Sure. There is a difference between a tax exemption, a ten-year tax exemption and, and in lieu of. In lieu of is in place of or instead of. Say it in that manner. We are requesting a payment instead of taxes. Instead, in lieu of, it, in place of.
I understand.
No, you have any doubt, or you would, you would have an entirely different contract.
Respect what you said.
Has America, or has Next Era ever paid property taxes in America?
In Kansas.
And to answer the senator's question when he posed that at your meeting about Kansas, no, they have not.
In America.
Saying they have not in the state of Kansas because they've never been referred.
I, in America, have they in America?
I don't know about America.
You probably would want to look that up because they do this across America and they never pay property taxes.
And Doug, you, you said another thing that.
Real quick, hold on.
Okay, yeah.
Yes or no, do you pay property taxes across America?
One hundred percent, yes.
That question's been answered.
Okay.
Your time is.
Can you document?
Would you?
No, you're done. Anybody else have, and that's not being rude to you, it's been over five minutes. Does anybody else have?
Can you, can you ask Mr. Anderson to document that? The amount of taxes and the states where Next Era has paid taxes in the last ten years?
Will you provide that to the commissioners? We have a debate.
I can try, I can tell you the one that I've worked on.
I know, like, trying to get the environment.
Get that from the.
But he said, he said that he knew that they did. So, but that's my question. Can he document in the United States of America, how much property tax Next Era has paid?
And I understand your point and it's valid, but it doesn't pertain to Republic County today. Are there any other?
I have, I have, as we're talking about documentation. Can we please see the initial agreement that Next Era promises? Let's see those so we can see what you negotiated on our behalf.
Yes, I will.
I want that and where are the?
Is there any opposition to having that put on the website? Do you have any opposition to that?
That's, and we're gonna discuss later.
And, and the other thing I wanna see that was promised is the environmental studies for Republic County because we've never seen those as well.
Okay, I believe it's on file with the courts office. Is that right from?
I have the one from the.
The state?
Well, state law, like, is the only one I have.
Right, okay. Um, and let me make a comment on the, there, what, what, what's been referred to as a red line version. So what you'll see is an original document and it has lines through it. There'll be different colored text on the back. There'll be a legend or a key that will help you follow through it. Keep in mind, not all negotiations, the document wasn't taken and the only form of communication was in the document. There were numerous emails. There were numerous emails back and forth, so on and so forth. And every so often, the documents would be redrafted and sent from one side to the other back and forth. So there are significant amounts of changes in that, in there. However, it may not represent every change that was negotiated or communication that occurred because a lot of it occurred through email between attorneys. Does that make sense?
We should, can I, can I mention?
We should probably get a list of people that want those documents.
I think we'll put them on the website.
Put them on the website.
They, they're nobody that they want.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I sent the three of you guys a letter several months ago. I followed up with two of you on the letter and I never got any response back. Yes, it was a long letter, but there was no response. The address of the letter was protection of our citizen and property rights. And I was trying to get back to the basics instead of quoting all these statistics and everything. None of you guys responded. Ed, you responded back to say, there's a lot of heartfelt stuff into here, but that was it. That's all it came. I accused you of whatever. You said you did not do that. That's fine. Okay, I don't wanna get into that. But to comment, what to comment on that, Doug?
No, I did respond. And then you later responded and wanted to sit down and have coffee and stuff like that, and I appreciate the offer.
And we never did.
No, but I took your information. I reviewed your information and I researched your information. So to say that I didn't respond is absolutely incorrect because I did.
You responded, Doug, that you were on vacation with your kids before school started and you were gonna get back, okay? You wanted to review the document. I never got a response, okay?
I'll have to look back at that. Thank you.
But whatever, it comes down to just pure protection of the citizens and property rights of this county. Back to the basics. We have no rights in this county as not being a part of this. How do we get rights? We all pay taxes into this system over here. Pay a lot of taxes. I've got over five hundred acres that I pay taxes on. What am I paying for? This junk over here? I don't wanna pay those taxes when I'm not getting represented. You say the comment about the school, that was published in the Bellevue Telescope over here, that if we are not signers, then we're not a friend of the school. Does that mean our kids are not welcome in the school? Those are the things I'm kinda talking about over here, okay? The fifteen hundred foot setback, we've never had, and we talked about in detail. And at the start of our committee, we presented these maps of where all the homes were. How many homes, the ratio of this stuff, and the lack of response that we got from this. The map's gone upstairs. It's now replaced with this up here. Has anybody ever dove into that map to see how, how populated the eastern part of Republic County is in relation to these towers? Does anybody really care except for the two top families of this county have forty-eight towers, forty-seven towers across two family entities, farm entities? That's a lot owned by just two families, okay? And yes, they're under the thumb, and those families over there. You got how many in between that have how many towers? Can any of these people that have signed an agreement live on all those properties? No, they cannot. But they're next to us on the non-participating side. And we have to put up with what they can do, whatever they want on the property. I'll say it again. There is no respect for us non-signers. In fact, it's getting to an epidemic level in this county that the divide is so intense. How many people have just, I don't wanna be involved because I can't handle the conflict, so they just go into the hole over here because they know they're not gonna be represented. This divide is magnitudes greater than the last school consolidation, how many years ago? And the one prior to that. And there are still feelings of, just terrible feelings, just about the school consolidation. What do you think you're doing here with this? This is magnitudes worse than the school consolidation. Magnitudes difference, you know?
Thank you for your comments today. That brings us to the conclusion. We have one short comment in the front. And we'll take it.
I have a question for you. Have any of you ever asked the younger generation what they wanna see of their county? See these young kids right here? Have any of you ever asked them that they want these, that they wanna live amongst these, that they wanna have a future here and have kids here? There are future of Republic County. Has any of you ever asked those young generation that they wanna see this?
You know, it goes back, it's a good point, but it goes back to the unions. And there are some who choose not to have them if they were in charge. And there are those that choose to have them if they were in charge. So it, it, it does go both ways from what I've heard in regards to the younger, the younger community. I'm sorry, we're nine thirty. We have a nine thirty agenda item. This lady right over here.
Can we classically have the next meeting maybe someplace else, a different location, and maybe a different time? So other taxpayers can maybe attend that are working right now?
We, we will. I, I don't know about the timeframe. We'll, we'll discuss it. Yeah, I have your question.
Uh, I don't own property out in the country, but I feel like it's raping our land. We weren't supposed to have, it's, this is farm ground. We're an ag. And the wind doesn't turn those turbines. Oil does. Our, our resources that Biden has been trying to get rid of is what runs those, not our wind. We're not gonna profit from that. Our, our city tax, our city bills are not gonna be lowered by any of this. The only people who are gonna profit are the cities and not us. Let the damn cities have the wind towers and leave us alone.
Thank you for your comments today. I appreciate it. We're gonna move on with our agenda item with our next.